I think, yeah, I don't know what happened.
Well, good, thank you, everybody, and welcome. We're really happy to have you all tonight. I call the meeting of the regular Community Relations Commission to a close. So I invite everybody to please rise and join me in my conference. Congratulations. To the United States of America, and to your republic, with its enemies, one nation under God, with its law, liberty and peace. And if we want to press that, please hold the wall.
Chair Gold? Here. Vice Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
Commissioner Crowe? Here. Commissioner Kim? Here. And Commissioner Nugent is excused.
Okay, so we're excited for helping learn this. Options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a wall request to speak to the official leader and hand it to our staff. If participating will not be, you should raise your hand, be turned in, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. At calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close a public comment period for each specific item. So if I can ask staff to please read the consent calendar.
Yes, we have one item on the consent calendar tonight, that is the approval of this minute, the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular review of the commission.
Thank you. So is there any member of the commission who would like to pull the item from the consent calendar? Yes? Okay, we have eight members of the public who wish to comment on the item on the consent calendar. And now would be the time to make the comment. This is what consent calendar contains for today. Anybody wish to comment? So asking staff if they have any requests to speak on the consent calendar item. Okay, thank you. So is there a motion from the commission to approve the consent calendar? How much? One second?
Call the rule? Chair Gold?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Yep.
Commissioner Kim?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prazian?
Good, thank you. So our next up on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff before words. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, that is subject to commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later on your agenda. So if I can ask our staff, can you please tell me who told another of the press to speak on general public comments?
Um, I think if we, uh, if we have no speakers on general public comments.
Okay, so we've got them ready to close the general public comment. And on to new business. Item two, twenty twenty five, community funding recommendations. Is there any new business you bring before the commission this evening?
Um, yes. Staff will give a brief presentation on the twenty twenty five community funding recommendations. Um, and then the Community Relations Commission will make their recommendations. We will also have some presentations from members of the public on the council. One second to set up the presentation. Just double checking that we can be heard in this room. Anyone participating remotely, you can hear us, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. I'm going to hand it off to Jennifer Mora, our housing specialist, to start off.
Hi, everyone, welcome for joining us this evening. So today we'll be discussing the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six community funding recommendations. On to next agenda, we are going to have a short introduction on the CDPG and community funding process. We're going to go over the applications received for CDPG, and we're also going to have presenters from nonprofits. And soon after, it will be followed by a discussion and community funding decisions.
The city of San Mateo's community funding program has been in place for many years. As you may be familiar with, if you've been participating in this process over the last several years, this is primarily funded by the Community Development Block Grant, or the CDPG. Uh, this is a federal grant from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Uh, the city of San Mateo receives an annual entitlement amount, and we then use those funds for services and projects in San Mateo that benefit the most vulnerable neighborhoods and also the city at large. In recent years, community funding has also included state funding from the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. That's referred to as the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, or PLHA. You may see that in the report for tonight, but the recommendations of the CRC may pertain only to CDPG.
Um, so the reason why we're going over the CDPG funding recommendations is because our consolidated plan, which is approved by HUD, um, identifies certain needs that the city of San Mateo uh, identify for our communities here. And um, this is a five-year plan, so we started in twenty twenty three and it will go on to twenty twenty seven. Currently, we're entering our year four of the plan, and some of the identified priorities in this current plan is, so examples of affordable housing, public services, street and sidewalk improvements, public facility improvements, economic development, and also primarily improving fair housing. So another big part is, um, we will, we had our plan approved, and now we're working on our annual action plan, which again is approved by HUD every single year. And this is just an overall progress on how the city of San Mateo is um, working towards our goal that we identified in the plan. We highlight certain grants that we received, programs that we fund, et cetera. And the funding recommendations that are made in this meeting will be incorporated into the action plan. And some of the funding categories that CDPG funds is shown in the screen. So community development, public services, housing, and economic development. And our meeting that we had with the Communities' Relations Commission on November twentieth of last year, we had our community needs assessment, which is done every single year. This is where we invite our community members to join and also share what are the certain priorities that they would like to see for us to um, focus on with working on funding recommendations. So um, this year, uh, one of the four funding recommendations that were made was for basic community needs, senior services, preserving and providing affordable housing, and street and sidewalk improvements. These needs are also identified in the plan, but what we noticed that was new this year was senior services. That is a new uh, need that was brought up in our meeting in November. And this is an overall timeline of the community funding process. So we released the NOPA with our cohort, which is made up of San Mateo County, Redwood City, Daly City, and South San Francisco. And this is the NOPA that many of you all applied in December and January. And it is followed by the funding recommendations that are made tonight. And after this meeting, we'll make a recommendation of the annual plan to the CRC in March of twenty twenty five. And soon after, we will present it to city council for an approval of annual plan in May. It could change, but this is a rough estimate of when we'll present to city council. And then we'll go over our applications that we received for CDPG funding, and I'll pass this on to Rachel. Thank you.
So this is very small on the screen, and very small on the screen. Um, it, on the left is the tip directly out of the staff report, and that's last year's CDPG budget. So the takeaway from this is not necessarily the exact numbers, but the fact that they look highly similar. Because what we do is we use the current year, twenty four, twenty five, as our estimate for what we will receive for the twenty five, twenty program year. As I'm sure all of you are aware, having worked in this field for many years, um, especially in recent years, the, our Congress is behind on passing a budget. This affects possibility to make allocation, and then our ability to turn around and say how much funding is actually available for any of these areas, these funding areas. So what we do every year is we assume we're going to get exactly what we got the year before. Uh, and then we have contingency language, which we'll go over at the end, uh, for if we get a little more or we get a little less. Of course, to add some additional context, this year, it is really unclear what the budget will be for CDPG for twenty five, twenty six. But to be fully transparent and to continue with the process that we typically have in a year in order for us to complete this on time, uh, we are working with the prior year's allocation, which was seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars. That's the annual entitlement amount. There are also programming income dollars and prior year resources. So these are resource, or dollars over the years that are not spent, with the activities that have been closed, did not spend all their funds. So we had a fair number of those this year. So that brings our total up to over a million. That's why our budget, the one on the right, is looking at just over a million dollars, but holding um, some of these other areas constant, in particular, public services, which many of you are here today, that has a fifteen percent cap, and that's fifteen percent of the year's entitlement. So we're fifteen percent of that seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. Um, and so that's where that assumption is coming from. Other areas, we are recommending just a whole constant. Um, and we'll speak later a little bit to the budget for public facilities, um, which is something that is available this year. Was not, last year is not available every year. Um, but due to the prior year resources that we have, we are, we were making those funds available, and those were in our NOPA this year. So this is just an overview of what are the assumptions we made to get us here tonight? What are we working with? We're working with, we're doing what we did last year. And, um, sorry, next slide, I'd like to keep talking. Um, you know, we consider this a renewal year. Um, CBG Public Services really runs on a two-year funding cycle, right? So those who are here for public services, um, grants are anticipating having the same amount of resources that they did for the first year. Um, and only those returning applicants, those agencies that are receiving CBG funds are eligible for funds this year. So for the commission as well, we're working within that context of basically renewing those contracts that are in place today at approximately the amount that they're at today. This is the, um, the budget from last year. This is the, um, compared to, I'm sorry, the amount that were allocated last year. They were all the amount for each organization. And then the column on the right is the amount that was requested by each of the organizations. I'm just going to go down through each area, um, and then we will hear from the organization itself. Uh, fair housing services are taken out of the CDPG admin budget. Um, so that's actually another, they're not, um, funds that are taken out of public services separately. Uh, we have one applicant for that, and currently we have Project Sentinel, um, as our fair housing services provider, requesting the same amount as last year, requesting the service in. Right through this. Minor Home Rehab, um, we have Rebuilding Together Peninsula, who has been running their two programs for several years. Last year, there were two applicants, two recipients. Um, Center for Independent, for Individuals with Disabilities not apply for funding. So we're looking at one applicant, Rebuilding Together, requesting same amount as the current year. Um, requesting to serve four households through Save at Home and six through National Rebuilding Day Program. Um, we may hear from Rebuilding Together this evening. As we know in the staff report, there have been some challenges with the first half of this program year in meeting and the numbers served, but the city is working with RTP, and we're doing some, some marketing, and so we anticipate being able to hit those numbers by the end of the program year. Um, Economic Development.
Um, so another section of CDPG that we fund is economic development. So we fund two programs with Renaissance and Upwards. So Renaissance is a micro-business assistance, and they have been a long-time grantee with the city of San Mateo. This year, they requested forty thousand to serve fifteen individuals. And just an update on their current progress, um, they have met twenty-two percent of their annual goals as a Q two. And with Upwards, this is a one full year as a grantee. They requested sixty-four thousand in their application for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, but we provided them with a forty thousand dollar grant in the year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. They also proposed to serve eleven individuals. And as a Q two, they have exceeded the goals as of one hundred and forty-three percent.
Public Facilities. Um, as I said, public facilities funds are not available necessarily every year, but the city does set aside funds over the course of the plan, the five-year plan, period, for public facilities projects. These are capital improvement projects for nonprofit organizations in the community, uh, for facilities that are open to the public. Public facilities dollars may also be used for capital improvement by the city. We fund some city public works projects in Heine neighborhood, street and sidewalk improvement projects in recent years. Those who were on the commission in July of twenty-four will remember that we had a CRC meeting to uniquely, I think this year, um, look at applications for, they were originally for the twenty-four, twenty-five program year, but because they came in late and were considered late, they were actually being considered very early for the twenty-five, twenty-six program here. And the CRC made recommendations to fund those two applications. One was hip housing, and the other one was Cora. Um, you can see here the descriptions of the, of the projects and the amounts that were approved. A place with a broken elevator, replaced with an HVAC, so on. Um, what happened with these two recommendations is that they would be coming into play now to be included in the twenty-five, twenty-six action plan. Hip housing was an application with, or excuse me, recommendation for an award with rescinded by the city, um, not because of any, um, anything that hip housing did, except that they were moving forward with certain other aspects of their office, the building that they were working on. And so in starting that work, it made this particular project ineligible. Um, and so the city recommended that hip apply for the funding in this NOPA that came out in January. So they're still in the running for public facilities funding for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, but we need to reconsider this new scope. Cora was recommended for funding for the Breeway, um, and the staff is recommending keeping that recommendation and including Cora, uh, Cora's project in the twenty-five, twenty-six annual action plan. On public facilities, as I just mentioned, hip housing is the applicant. So again, rescinded on word from the prior application, they're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand, um, again, for the, for the elevator, just for the elevator, as their new offices on the path. That's the public facilities project. Next one, P L A J.
Uh, yeah, so as Rachel mentioned earlier in the presentation, that we also receive P L A J funds from the state. And in this, uh, the purpose of this slide is just informational. The CRC does not make recommendations for P L A J funds. Um, so for P L A J, we're currently in year five, so it's in a five-year cycle. And as our last year, uh, we're going to receive two hundred and twenty-four thousand. And, uh, currently in for twenty-four, or twenty-five, twenty-six, sorry, we're going to fund three programs for Light Move Traffic Rehousing, Hip Housing, and Samaritan House. And, um, you can see the amounts on the left that they proposed in their applications, but the amounts that are highlighted are the amounts that they will be receiving for these programs. And this is due to that in our annual applications that we submit to the Housing and Development, Community Development Department, is that, um, we already have to, uh, basically allocate these funds every single year. So, uh, these are the funds that we already planned for.
And I should say that these are, these are recommendations. This will go separately to the city council. There may be some slight changes, but we can't, as Jennifer said, deviate too much from the percentage allocation to, to these projects. That's why we don't ask for CRC recommendations, because we're morally locked in um, with the time that we submit to, to each city. Okay.
Well, for tonight's meeting, uh, we are going to allow the applicants to make a short presentation, and we appreciate everyone who attended today to, um, speak to us about your programs and about your applications. And the CRC will be able to make questions to the applicants, and then soon after, the CRC will deliberate on the funding recommendations. And, um,
Oh, yeah. Um, this is more, I think we flashed this on the screen when the CRC is actually thinking about the funding consideration, but this is where we talk about the contingency language, if we get more, if we get less. Um, but just keeping in mind, this is a renewal year. We do have fewer applicants for public services than we did in twenty-four, twenty-five, um, because some recipients chose not to reapply. And, um, again, we don't know actually how much we're getting, so we're just working with our estimates. So with that, I believe with that, yeah, we can, um, close this presentation. I would like to clarify, we did receive speaker slips. Uh, I would like to clarify, if these individuals are looking to make public comments or if they are looking to make a presentation on behalf of their organization. Is there anyone who submitted a speaker slip that is actually making a presentation that they? Oh, I see. Oh, yes, no, and, and we actually, um, received a notification from most of you that you would be presenting. So we established, we had actually established this speaker list. We were going to go in a particular order. That may not be the order in which we received the public comment slip. Um, but it is all right with all of you, if we can just go in this order. Everyone will have the same amount of time to speak, okay? Is there anyone who submitted a speaker slip who is not presenting and would like to make public comments? I'll call you during that time, okay? I see someone online. Uh, he, oh, that's okay, that's a presentation. All right. So uh, we intended to simply go in a certain order, um, and starting with the public services presentation. Uh, so that order would be Call Primrose, Cora, Friends for Youth, Legalist Society, Light Move, and Samaritan House. Uh, and so do we have the representative from Call Primrose? Is that Terry? Okay, let's, um, note Terry. Hey, Terry, she'll be able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, great, I sound like a Verizon commercial. Um, good evening, commissioners and city staff. My name is Terry Bosch, and I am the Executive Director of Call Primrose. And we appreciate past support that the commission has allocated to us in the city of San Mateo, and welcome the opportunity tonight to speak on behalf of Call Primrose, and appreciate your consideration of our request. And for those of you who may not be familiar, Call Primrose is a nonprofit organization located in Burlingame. Uh, we operate a drop-in pantry, providing free, healthy groceries to low-income individuals and families throughout San Mateo County. And while our role in the community at one time was that of emergency food for those in emergency situations, we now find ourselves in a position of being sustenance for so many that count on us. Uh, we are, if, the primary, if not the only grocery resource for so many in our community who need help putting food on the table. In fact, roughly eighty percent of the folks that visit us, uh, visit us multiple times each month to pick up groceries, with almost half, forty-five percent of those coming in at least four times a month. Last year, Call Primrose served roughly seventy-two thousand individuals, and these are duplicated individuals. Our, our clients are allowed to come in each week to pick up groceries. Uh, we've distributed more than a hundred and ten thousand bags of groceries, and roughly thirty-five percent of those we serve are residents of the city of San Mateo. And I just want to, um, with my time, emphasize the graph here. And as I'm sure is true with all the services presenting tonight, um, hunger and food insecurity within our community are very real, um, and they continue to rise as the cost of living, the cost of groceries, the cost of everything in our community continues to rise. Um, before the pandemic, and I know I've spoken about this before, you know, we thought we were serving a lot of people through, through seeing two hundred families a week. We are now seeing, um, five hundred and fifty families a week. So we didn't get the expected fallback that many thought would happen um, as the pandemic ended over the course of those two years. In fact, we're now seeing more clients than we've ever seen before. We're seeing over a hundred families a day visiting our center to pick up groceries. And again, we know this is only going to continue to grow as we're seeing cuts in a lot of areas, most specifically cuts from our primary food resource partner. Uh, the support of the city is going to assist us in securing the additional grocery items, uh, maintaining the additional staff that we need now, and allowing us to remain a reliable resource that so many in our community and within the city of San Mateo, um, count on to put food on the table. So again, we thank you for the opportunity and for the consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that commissioners or staff may have.
Um, Commissioner, we were going to just run through the presentations, and then have you be able to ask questions to each of the organizations. Uh, the next organization is Cora, and I believe Melissa Gibbs is here.
Thank you, members of the Community Relations Commission, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Melissa Gibbs, I can speak her pronouns. Uh, I am the manager of our legal services program at Cora. Uh, for those who might not be familiar with Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, we are the only agency in San Mateo County solely dedicated to serving survivors of intimate partner violence. Uh, to provide a brief overview of our services, we have a crisis hotline that's answered twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, where our staff assists with providing referrals, education about domestic violence, safety planning when needed, access to emergency, hoteling, and crisis intervention services. We have two safe houses in the county that can house up to twenty-eight individuals and children. These are confidential addresses so that folks can go and have a safe, supportive environment when they're feeling abuse. We also provide over a million dollars per year in HUD rental subsidies through our supportive housing program. We have mental health services, including group, child, and adult, and family-oriented therapy, and a range of community education and prevention programs for families who have been impacted by COVID. Tonight, Cora is specifically requesting, uh, funding to support our legal services program. So we provide legal advocacy and representation in family law, legal cases. So we provide legal advocacy and representation in family law, legal cases, as well as criminal cases where the victim is a witness in the district attorney's case against the abuser, helping to understand their role in that process, their rights under mercy's law. The family court system, I'm sure many of you are aware, has the immense power to either positively or negatively impact a survivor's trajectory in, as they are leaving an abusive relationship. For example, the family court can decide whether the survivor and their children have remained in the home, to grant child custody, self-help orders so that the survivor can maintain independence from their abuser, to uh, grant restraining orders and order that their abusive partner not contact or come near them, as well as custody and visitation orders, quite literally when and dictating when and how somebody can parent their child. However, the availability of free legal services in San Mateo County is nowhere near than here. In fact, Cora and Bay Area Legal Aid are the only agencies in San Mateo County that provide such services. At Cora, we have three levels to our legal services. We have a legal line that folks can call and receive legal information, brief legal advice from one of our attorneys, and referrals to other organizations to receive assistance with their case. Advocacy services, where we help folks gather evidence, prepare declarations, draft all of the forms necessary to go through the family court process, help them prepare for those hearings, as well as provide them with accompaniment so that somebody can go with them to those proceedings in court, to those law enforcement reports, and district attorney interviews, so that they don't have to do that by themselves. And then our third category are our representation services, where one of our attorneys is actually presenting a campaign on the survivor. In the last fiscal year, we uh, received over two thousand calls from more than eight hundred individuals seeking legal assistance. San Mateo residents constituted fifteen point five percent of calls for services. However, because of our C D V G funding, we're able to prioritize San Mateo residents for a more comprehensive advocacy and representation services. And so city of San Mateo residents actually constituted twenty percent of the individuals who received those, those services. Um, wanna thank you for your support over the years and your consideration of our application tonight.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Friends For You, Monica Maria. Yep, here.
Monica, I have a quick question. Uh, I received an annual report of, would you want me to show it on the screen?
I also.
Oh, awesome.
So.
Well, my name is Monica Maria, and I am the director of operations for Friends For You. Um, and Friends For You has benefited from C D V G over the years. Um, we have, um, our mission is really to empower underserved youth to mentorship in community relationships. Um, over in our vision is to provide every young person who needs a mentor with a mentor. Uh, we have run mentorship programs since nineteen seventy-nine and have made over forty-three thousand matches uh, to date. And some of our one-to-one mentorships date back to the eighties and still meet today. Um, some of our mentees have become mentors and the mentors now are board members. So we are really excited to just see uh, those relationships flourish. Um, over the four decades, we have maintained a hundred percent safety rating for all of our volunteers with no incident, which is unheard of for an organization our size. We serve extremely vulnerable communities and take the utmost priority in protecting our young people. Um, we also take mental health services very seriously. And half of us on the staff have studied mental health or are social workers by trade. We also have created a pipeline for uh, inspiring social workers to come and volunteer with us and gain some uh, hands-on experience as they're getting their social work degree. In our group mentoring programs, we teach social emotional learning, and comfort mechanisms, emotional awareness, regulation, healthy relationships, and the maintain a goal is to provide a safe space for all of our youth. In two thousand and eighteen, we launched and led a collective of local graduate nonprofits, nonprofits called the Whole Health For You uh, collaborative, and we're working together to decrease duplicated services uh, in our communities. Um, services, uh, and we're also increasing, increasing effectiveness across the programs. Uh, because mentoring builds bridges across communities, we are able to identify needs in our youth and our families and then refer them through our partners uh, who also specialize in different things like therapy, housing, and parent support groups, for example. Collectively, we hope to be, build, be the village that every young person needs. And I know, and I needed, I know I needed a village growing up, and I'm sure many of us can agree that we all, it's just thanks to village. Um, the Kaiser Community Health Need Assessment, Finding supports the importance of behavioral health, which includes mental health and trauma among the top health needs in San Mateo and San Clara County. Just last year, we served over five hundred mentees and their families, and the impact was over two thousand um, individuals each year. Ninety-five percent of our students would like to continue in our program, which if you know anything about middle schoolers and high schoolers, trying to get them to do anything or want to do anything, it's really hard. Uh, ninety-four percent recommend this to their friends and their loved ones. And Friends For You has achieved the highest rating on charity navigation and Guide Stars since twenty-twenty. Our small nonprofit of ten come from an immigrant family from our communities right here in San Mateo. Um, almost all of us speak another language at home and are the first ones in our families, not only graduate high school, but college and pursue a higher education and then come back to our communities and serve our communities. Uh, we're really proud of the impact we have created here in San Mateo. And as you all know, we're still expanding into different schools in San Mateo and Rebel City. Um, and so really grateful for the funding that you all have been able to provide. Thank you for the consideration.
Right. Uh, next up, we have Legal Aid Society, San Mateo County, David Curry.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, thank you for your service. Um, I have a not-so-sexy uh, my full heart fax I hand out. I try to put a one-pager together, uh, summarizing kind of state of evictions. Um, I sent it by email and you're free to distribute that. Uh, free to distribute that to anybody, uh, by email who's not uh, here in person. But um, my name's David Curry, Jimmy, uh, directing attorney for the housing team at the Legal Aid Society, San Mateo County. Um, our mission is to keep people in their homes to prevent homelessness. And we do that through legal representation and legal services to low-income folks that are threatened with losing their housing. Um, we've been monitoring the number of evictions. And there's some uh, numbers on, on my one-pager here. Um, between, well, two thousand and nineteen was the last year before the pandemic hit, when the laws were, were normal. There was eleven hundred and twenty uh, eviction cases filed in court. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, the first uh, year after the pandemic laws had gone away, protections had gone away, there was fifteen hundred and twenty uh, multiple detainer eviction cases filed in court. Um, that's a thirty-five percent increase in eviction cases filed against tenants from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but some people thought, well, that's just the post-pandemic flip. So we got the numbers in from two thousand and twenty-four and it was up to sixteen hundred and sixty plus, um, which is another almost ten percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. The first six weeks of this year, um, things are not looking any better. There's already been two hundred and seventy uh, eviction cases filed just the first six weeks of this year. Project that out for the year, we'd be uh, like over two thousand uh, evictions, which would be another like thirty percent increase even over even last year, which is kind of crazy to think about. Um, the point is, the problem's not getting any better. It's getting tougher out there for our low-income tenants and our working-class families uh, that rent. Um, according to a study by Stanford of some of the eviction data, about eighty-five percent of the cases are based on non-payment of rent. So we all know the rents are high for people, high for low-income folks, high for working-class families. And uh, and a large majority of the eviction cases filed are based on alleged non-payment of rent. I have to say alleged, one because I'm an attorney, and two because um, it's not always true that they are, that they owe all the rent that the landlord says. And that's where, you know, uh, advocacy agencies like ours come in. We can prove sometimes that the landlord has overcharged the tenant or miscalculated their uh, the rent or given an illegal rent increase. Or uh, unfortunately, there's a, a property in San Mateo that we're working with right now that has section eight tenants, but they weren't counting, they weren't getting credit from the housing authority payments uh, to the tenants, and then they're moving to evict these tenants alleging non-payment of rent when it was just a miss, it was an error, an accounting error in the landlord's office. So um, that's a case where we come in and we show what's really going on and stop those evictions from happening. Particularly difficult for section eight tenants. They get evicted, they can also lose their section eight voucher. So um, like to say, like to point out that eviction is a legal process, and that's why it's important to have legal representation for the tenants. And that's what we provide. Uh, just a few more numbers, uh, about one-third of the eviction cases get filed in court. Those tenants make it to us for services. Uh, so it's a pretty large number, it's about nine hundred total people that, cases we saw last year, which is eviction cases and other housing problems, pre-eviction cases or eviction notices, habitability problems. Um, when we get involved and we're able to represent, we um, keep people in their homes about sixty percent of the time. And the other forty percent, we're able to get uh, better, you know, better results for them. So um, we appreciate the past support from the city with a continuing support and uh, appreciate the opportunity today to share with you uh, state of evictions in the, the city and the county. Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, we have Life Move, and we have Japanese.
Good evening, commissioners and city staff. Um, and thank you so much for holding this session. My name is Stephanie Suttle, and I'm the associate program director at the First Step for Families and Housing Program here in San Antonio. And I'm doing Life Move's take. Um, so Life Move is the largest and most innovative nonprofit organization committed to ending the cycle of homelessness for families and individuals in San Francisco family and Silicon Valley. Since nineteen seventy-seven, our mission has been to provide around housing and supportive services for homeless families and individuals to rapidly return to stable housing and uh, achieve long-term self-sufficiency. Uh, in FY twenty-four, Life Move serves nearly seven thousand five hundred unique clients through outreach, uh, in our supportive housing, community housing, and prevention programs, and returned over uh, seventeen hundred clients back to stable housing. On any given night, we need clothes and provide uh, temporary housing to more than fifteen hundred uh, individuals across over twenty-five program and service sites, uh, which has made possible through the work of one hundred and twenty-five employees and thousands of social workers and volunteers. Uh, in addition to providing the basic necessities of food, clothing, uh, emergency housing, Life Move serves eighty-six percent of its clients intensively. Uh, so we provide intensive case management and a broad range of supportive services by connecting them with our internal departments and external agent agencies. And so this includes employment counseling, uh, housing book theater systems, financial literacy education, healthcare referrals, substance use disorder uh, counseling, and behavioral health and support services. So uh, First Step for Families specifically is the largest parent housing site in San Mateo County. So there's two buildings, there are twenty-four uh, furnished studios in one building, and then the other one has fifteen one-bedroom apartments where we serve uh, thirty-nine families every night. Um, its regular capacity is about one hundred and thirty individuals, but we house more than two hundred and twenty family members at a singular time, which is multi-generation homes. And so uh, last year, we served more than three hundred and twenty individuals in eighty-nine households at First Step, providing uh, sleep shelter, uh, food, clothing, and comprehensive supportive services. Uh, thirty-one out of the three hundred and twenty-three individuals and nine out of the eighty-nine households served at First Step were city center residents. And uh, families are assigned uh, to First Step, new coordinate entry system. Uh, so weddings isn't always able to guarantee that city center San Mateo residents will always be placed at First Step, but C D F does attempt to please families in the program that is uh, closest to their last known residence, state of residence. Uh, the average length of stay for families in FY twenty-four at First Step was one hundred and eighteen days. And uh, it cost approximately one point nine million dollars to operate First Step last year. Uh, one hundred and sixty-three total city of San Mateo residents were served at Life Move and FY twenty-four. And in addition to the thirty-one residents uh, served at uh, First Step and FY twenty-four, Life Move served another one hundred and thirty-two city San Mateo residents across a range of other uh, locations and programs. It cost more than one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to provide housing, intensive case management, and other supportive services to the very one city of San Mateo residents who stayed at First Step last year. And it granted the uh, the funding request from uh, C D V G funds, the N F S A T A, that will support the housing and comprehensive management and supportive services provided to thirty-nine families at First Step for families. Uh, where generally the commission's consideration of funding request night. And uh, we just have the opportunity to present.
Thank you. All right, next up in the order of speakers, I have Robin Fisher from Samaritan House. I wanna make sure we don't have anyone from the Trump Service Department here, thank you. Okay, first, I've been Robin.
Hi. Um, I'm Robin Fisher, the associate director of client services with Samaritan House. And I just want to start by thanking you for much, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Samaritan House and for the past support. Um, as you probably know, last year, Samaritan House celebrated fifty years of service to those seeking the most basic safety net services that include food, clothing, housing resources, and lots more. When we started out fifty years ago, it was in the home of our founder, Dr. Cora Clemmons, who first saw that need in her community and started a food pantry in her home for those in need. From such humble beginnings, we have now flourished into an agency that in the past year has served over twenty-six thousand individuals, and that's about ten thousand households. We provide services such as case management, financial assistance, financial empowerment programs. Um, if it's a homelessness prevention, we provide financial assistance to those in need of deposit, rent, utilities, emergency car repair, and sometimes even medical equipment. For you, we have kids' closets that's a store setting where kids and their parents can shop and have nice clothing like their classmates. And we also do backpack giveaways and have a very robust holiday program. We also operate um, the Walker Resource Center, three homeless shelters, and we have two free clinics providing primary care and prevention services for uninsured adults. Food Services is our largest program, and it includes now a drive-through food pantry. And our newest core is Market. And we also provide mobile meals for homebound seniors and disabled individuals. We provide meals to school pantries, summer schools, and senior facilities. And at our clinics, we also have a food pharmacy for those with diabetes and high blood. Um, I'll look back at fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, Samaritan House assisted six hundred and forty-eight San Mateo residents through our client services program. And that includes funds to cover the rent, deposits, and utilities. Uh, we continue to serve over fifteen hundred meals daily with the help of a slew of volunteers. Our recently opened dining room, community dining room at the Congressional Church welcomes over seventy-five individuals every day. We recently launched our L I P H program, which is our lifeline to ignite financial transformation. And this is with a cohort of fifteen low-income single mothers. And this initiative will empower single mothers to achieve self-sufficiency by increasing their financial stability, agency, and self-determination through a supplemental income pilot program. These participants will receive up to one thousand dollars per month. It is a two-year program, and this is the amount estimated um, that these individuals will, they would need to supplement income for the second job. Um, it seems like we've done quite a bit of work over the years, but the need, as everybody has said, still continues. It seems like we've done quite a bit of work over the years, but the need, as everybody has said, still continues to be great. We continue to serve over two hundred families with our food pantries between the drive-through and the chorus market. We still have many coming to us for rental assistance. And like we were before, we thought that that would go down after the pandemic. It has actually increased in the past year. And we are just still hearing from people who are unemployed or underemployed and just not making what they used to. It's work like this that we do every day. And Samaritan House recognizes that any of this is possible without the strong support of the City of San Mateo. Again, we thank you for all you've done to support the work of Samaritan House. And we look forward to continuing this partnership for years to come. Thank you.
May I suggest to the chair that we pause here and allow the commissioners to ask questions with any of the public services agencies represented and then we'll move on to economic development. It sounds great. I want to see if there are some questions.
I have just one. This is something we'll step before I mention, but it might be more questionable stat. And he said that from the funds you receive from CPBBG, you've actually been able to assist more San Mateo residents specifically. Is that a funding? Is that a requirement CPBBG that the funds that comes from the City of San Mateo and our grants have to serve a San Mateo resident? Just want to confirm.
Um, yes, certainly. Not exclusively, but.
What is the pathway for your organization? Based on if you have more residents than any given year in San Mateo City, what happens, you know, in terms of funding like that? Like you can't control who ends up applying for your services. Like what happens? When, you know, for a few years, you might have more San Mateo residents, another year you might have less. Like how do y'all keep up with that? Are you just not able to do that?
Um, so it really just depends on where we are capacity-wise. I specifically mentioned the three different levels of services because if we don't have the capacity to provide them representation, then we'll look at advocacy or look at our legal information and for all services. So it really just depends kind of where we're at. We don't put a dollar amount on each City of San Mateo client that comes in. We recognize that we receive City of San Mateo funding specifically for our legal services. So when we're looking at our capacity, if somebody is from the City of San Mateo, they essentially get like a point in their favor in terms of our service offerings.
Can you tell me, I got lost in duplicative. Can you say that again? Are you working with the out of the means of creating more capacity?
Um, so for the why collaborative, um, our hopes is not to create duplicated services. So we are thinking of the whole help, like whole help for youth without all of our thing. Um, so everybody that's part of the collaborative doesn't do the same things. So we have somebody, like I said, specifically that focuses on housing, somebody that specifically focuses on like parent education, someone that specifically focuses on like therapy, both child and families and as well as after-school like programs.
Then I had a question from the legal. You mentioned in your application that you're not being able to hire a lawyer right now. If this grant, that's some of the money that comes into the allocation, it will help? Can we check or maybe a question or?
Yeah, good question. Um, we recently had an attorney resign to another job somewhere else. And we're not able to rehire that position currently. So that's what we're talking about. So and part of that is a lot of our funding was during the pandemic era funding that allowed us to hire that. But that funding has run out, has expired. And so we're really trying to backfill or just get get more funding so we could, we'd love to get back up to three staff attorneys and myself. We're down to myself, two staff attorneys. We would love to get more funding and get back up to three staff attorneys, yes.
Um, I have one more question for Terry from Red Row. And this is just from your application. And I don't think it affects this grant because I think you applied for a slightly less amount after the previous year. But just wanted to see how your organization was just planning for your anticipated kind of increased costs for direct food purchases, cutbacks and your donated items, your in-kind food donor. I'm wondering how your organization overall is preparing for that.
Uh, we, so our, we receive about six to seven hundred thousand dollars in in-kind food donations from Second Harvest and Silicon Valley. Between that and our grocery rescue programs with, with five different retail grocery stores. Um, in addition to that, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our budget, but we raise another six hundred thousand dollars typically a year to, to cover our costs. We are looking at our, um, not only our, um, current money that we, that we plan to raise, and we do try to diversify our, our resources or our sources of funding between a fundraising event, our community grants and our individual donations. Um, but we're also looking at some reserves. We have that backlog reserves should we need to go out and purchase more. And I think that any of our, we do offer our clients groceries on a, um, a choice-based model. So we have to have, you know, if something's on our menu, we need to have at least a hundred and fifty families worth of items that day. So we do need to get things in bulk. And so we are looking at additional, uh, resources to acquire food from, which quite frankly is even more difficult these days, especially when you mentioned eggs or chicken and that sort of thing. So the resources become just as if not more difficult than the funding. But we are looking at also, if necessary, our board has approved going to reserves so that we make sure that even as we're being cut back, um, in terms of what we're receiving in kind, we're able to still be, be there and provide for our clients. I, I, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Thank you, Ken.
Can I ask Terry why you requested less money this year than last year?
Oh, three letters, CDS. So city data services, we've had a, for some reason, a couple glitches with. We didn't request less. And as I'm looking at, it's a copy of my printout here. It says fourteen thousand one hundred total amount. So for some reason, that, that number at some point was communicated as the number we're requesting. Um, we've had, we've had several meetings, but rest assured, we did request our intent. If, if something happened in the translation, we did expect to request the same amount, um, as, as we did the prior period. Thank you.
I also have a question for Terry.
Yes.
So I love how you had clients, you said, they actually are repeat clients, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, how do you, how do you reach out to new clients? I know that in your application, you said you advertise via like Samtrans and also closer to as at D and B.
Right. Our biggest, go ahead.
I just wonder in terms of your application, what else do you emphasize those?
Uh, well, we try because of where we're located. We're downtown Burlingame. And we understand the sort of image that's connotated when you say food pantry, even though only about four percent of our folks are actually unhoused. Um, we do, we are across the street from a, an elementary school and, um, and we share grounds with a preschool. So we do all of our, um, of our outreach through centers of influence, through the, through the, um, methods that you mentioned. Um, most of it comes from referrals. Um, we work with, um, the, um, street med team. We work with, um, different centers of influence. We're listed with Second Harvest and their Food Connection Hotline, Bay Area two-one-one. Um, all the different resources. We work with congregations. We work with schools. We're listed on, on, um, uh, San Mateo County's, uh, school website. So we try to, um, look to our centers of influence to send people over. And we're seeing about, um, between eight to ten new, um, clients every day. And as I said, most of these become repeat clients. And unfortunately, we're seeing, um, more clients that are unhoused and in vehicles. And that's a separate program that we have, um, specific products that we make available. So we are constantly reaching out, um, through primarily centers of influence in addition to the, to the media, um, uh, methods that you, that you read about in the report.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for Life Move and I think this one should be, um, for more for sale. So, um, so I understand that the city currently has a contract, right? And so in terms of services, um, um, how are those services like, um, do you look at that, uh, what you're asking, or what is, what is covered in the contract?
Oh, um, and what differentiates, for example, the core services program from, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's very fast. Um, First Step For Families from core services from, um, Call Promotes, for example. There may be some overlap, but the, each organization has its own, I would say either target population or specialization. So for Life Move, we are supporting First Step For Families, specifically supporting that shelter, right? Um, with Samaritan House, Samaritan House with the whole range of services that they provide. So, um, Samaritan House, we'll just talk more about core services if we can. Um, and then, um, Call Promotes is just focused on food security. So there might be light overlap between the programs, but they're not, they're definitely serving specific populations. The families that would go to First Step For Families are, are not the same ones that would, um, necessarily go to, um, Call Promotes. They could, but they're more likely to be seeking shelter than be going to Life Move. So, so everyone is, um, you know, they all are providing similar services because it is CPBBG. But they all are, you know, targeting either a specific population or have a specific service that the other one doesn't have. Or if anyone from the organization wants to.
I mean, I can try to share a little bit. I know, um, for example, one thing on seeking shelter specifically, we would call first two-one-one. And then we would act after twelve o'clock service, ABC, which everyone is supposed to see. So for us, it would be directly Samaritan House. But for example, if we were a work city, then it would be Fair Oaks Community Center. And so, um, I know we do work, we're intertwined in a way because for example, as soon as someone is about to secure a permanent home, our end, then we potentially reach out to Samaritan House to, to secure deposit bonds or something like that. But we work adjacent to each other, but we have our support needs.
Thank you. Or had, if you're a good shareholder, had, had your hand raised. Did you have comments or questions?
Um, this is a question really for any of our presenters. Have you, uh, because I know that we've, these applications were submitted, um, more than a couple of weeks ago. Have any of you learned that you are going to be missing out on federal funding in the last couple of weeks? And that, does that affect your ability to serve the community? And would you ask, would you change your ask as a result of kind of what's been going on in the last ten days?
Yes. So specifically for our legal services program, uh, we do have a very significant federal grant that supports our program. Um, and it's, it's very scary. Yes.
I would say, like everyone, it's, um, times where we are in a really wait-and-see, trying to figure out what's going on. We've been given instructions on, um, certain things that can't be on applications anymore, things that can't be on our websites anymore, our literature anymore, and how programs cannot specifically target, um, you know, who we have historically served. Uh, when we speak of the low-income communities. And so, you know, we hit to the word that was issued to scary times. Um, but I think that what you see in this room with all of these presenters, and even you all as staff, you see resilience and we will, we will continue to be resilient and rise.
Terry, did you?
I, yeah, so I, I agree that completely with the resilience. I also want to say that we, you know, we fortunately are, um, very diversified where we do have federal, um, fund connections. We have had communications, but as you can imagine, the communications have all been, we don't really know what's going to happen yet. So, um, but we also, what our, what our focus has been is being steadfast and, um, and should for some reason, a certain population be targeted, should you get, um, an ICE visit, it's to be prepared for something like that. So that's sort of, of where we are. The funding is almost secondary right now. I think when you're serving these populations, we're trying to mitigate fear. We're trying to, um, make sure everybody understands that our information is confidential. Um, we're not sharing it with others and, um, and work with that and ensure that people are still asking when they need, um, when they need help with grocery support or housing and those sorts of things that they don't, that they don't go into hiding and just not get the resources. So that's sort of in the focus versus, you know, whether or not we'll, we'll get the funding because really nobody seems to know for sure at this point.
Thank you.
All right. Then we can continue with our presentations. Uh, we'll move now to economic development. There are two applicants under economic development. The first one is Renata, Japanese Brussels.
Commissioner, thank you for your continued and long, as it said on the screen. Um, you've been a partner of ours and a funder for us for years. Uh, it has allowed us to directly serve San Mateo residents. Being the central part of the county for years before we even started getting funding for San Mateo, we were serving Rebel City, Daly City, South City. And it was like skipping over San Mateo. And it's like, wait a minute, we need to serve residents rather than them having to leave their city to go to other areas to be served. So you all allowed that to happen. It turned in us, it turned into us becoming the host of the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center that's housed here in the City of San Mateo and the San Mateo Office. So, um, those opportunities that you allowed us to have to be in the city uh, has allowed us to really scale our organization throughout the county and specifically San Mateo. We are an organization that transforms lives through entrepreneurship. Uh, as you know, small businesses are always struggling, especially low-income, without the tools and resources needed in order to grow their business. So we work on the levels of pre-startup, somebody that is, they got an idea. They want to see, can I turn this hobby into a business? I bake a great cookie, my family told me, but is it a business? We're able to really walk them through, you know, those, um, idea stages to help them understand what is needed. And then, you know, fifty percent, probably forty percent decide to move forward. And we see that as success because we don't want someone trying to start and then lose money and fail. So, um, in that, we're able to continue to serve and help individuals go from pre-startup to startup and then to grow and then be the on-ramp to the Small Business Development Center. This focus is really capital infusion. So they'll grow and get to a place where they're able to ask for the kind of capital they need to really allow their business to scale. I read an interesting article just recently that growth has to come before scaling. And so we are in that lane of helping businesses grow so that they can scale. Um, speaking to our current, um, through quarter two at twenty-two percent, we were very intentional in this fiscal year not to report on anyone who is, if there's any gaps in the data, if there is an income form missing, if there is a box not checked, we're like, we're not reporting until we get that information. Um, we spent quarter three and our program manager that's online, Teresa Perez, you know, located a lot of the information that's needed to be able to report on those, I think it was about fourteen individuals that we weren't able to report on. That would put us up around fifty percent because historically, San Mateo has been where we hit our numbers and go beyond. Um, but during a CPBBG audit, we realized that there were gaps. And we realized that we needed to make sure before we report and not scramble that everything in every box is checked. So I just wanted to speak to that twenty-two percent that you'll see that rise up in quarter three. Um, I am the regional director covering a lot of territory, but our program manager Teresa's online and Nora Rizone, who is but our program manager Teresa's online and Nora Rizone, who is overseeing both the SBDC and the San Mateo County, uh, is working diligently to make sure that our businesses are served, your residents are served, and we continue to transform lives through entrepreneurship. So thank you for your continued support and we look forward to continuing working with you.
Um, the second applicant under economic development is Upwards. Um, it's Melanie, yes, okay. We have Melanie to the panel.
Good evening, Commissioners, Community Development Team. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Melanie Four. I'm the Community Impact Manager at Upwards. And on behalf of the Boost team, I want to thank you for your past support and advocate for continued support of San Mateos and home childcare providers and working families. Um, the Boost program equips low to moderate income micro enterprise childcare providers with personalized coaching and digital tools to optimize their operations and increase revenue. This allows them to efficiently manage and grow their small businesses and create, uh, local teaching assistant jobs and expand access to affordable quality care for the working families in the community. I'm pleased to share that the Boost team has already exceeded all projected outcomes and we're only halfway through the program year. So thanks to your past support, our Boost team has partnered with eight home daycares to provide micro enterprise technical assistance and personalized one-on-one business support. So this is three over than what we had projected. And of these eight providers, three have already hired teaching assistants, resulting in two new full-time jobs and three new part-time jobs. In turn, eighty percent have increased capacity, which not only helps increase their revenue, but also helps expand access and affordability of care for all the families they serve. Um, and the Boost team has also supported over two hundred families in finding care that really suits their unique needs. Um, I wanted to shout out one particular success story is Marisela Reyes, owner of Marisela's Family's Daycare, who, um, the Boost team helped expand her, uh, her daycare from a small family operation to a large family daycare in October. And, um, with their support, she was able to navigate the application process and streamline all the business operations, like tuition collection and enrollments. And, um, we also started recently outside of CDPG, funding a teacher assistant subsidy to help offset the cost of, um, that expansion and hiring on a teaching assistant. Uh, there's still more work to do though. There's still over a hundred in-home childcare providers who, in San Mateo, who are not operating at a sustainable level. And meanwhile, a capacity gap of, of over sixteen, or seventeen hundred children under the age of six, who wouldn't have access to licensed childcare slots in the city. This is pretty conservative estimate because, um, as you may know, these daycares also offer before and after school care for up to the age of thirteen. Uh, but the good news is the Boost team keeps exceeding all projected outcomes and timelines. Um, just last year, we partnered with a dozen municipalities to support over two hundred and twenty providers and create a hundred and twenty-nine new jobs. Um, many of those in San Jose alone, we were supporting a hundred and thirty-three providers and have already created thirty-five of thirty-nine new jobs there, um, well ahead of schedule. So, um, we really hope that we can build on the momentum of the inaugural year in San Mateo. And, um, with your full support, we'd have the potential to bolster eight more childcare providers and create at least three new teaching assistant positions. But as I think you can see from even year one, that we like to under-promise, over-deliver with our projected outcomes. Um, I also want to highlight that, you know, our goal is not only to expand access and availability of care, but also really improve the quality and inclusivity of care for all of the working, uh, families in San Mateo that these providers help serve. Um, and I can really speak from my personal experience, having both my boys and Upwards Partner Daycares, that that was really what drew me, uh, to join the team and mission. So with that, I'm happy to answer, um, any questions at the appropriate time, both as a representative of Upwards and as a parent, who will always be grateful for, um, our, you know, the daycares who, who care for our little ones. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, we're off here. Um, if there are any questions from the commissioners for the economic development applicants? Um, I have a question, um, for, for Melanie. How many are you going to serve next year? Because are you serving eleven and then it's eight more, so it's nineteen? Or is it eight now and it's just eleven? I'm confused.
Yeah, that's a little confusing. It's a good question. Thank you for allowing me to clarify. Um, so what we had proposed is to bring on eight more childcare providers. And of those eight, we would anticipate to create at least three new teaching assistant positions. So that's where the eleven comes from, is eight new providers and three new teaching assistant positions. Again, that's a very conservative estimate. Um, you know, we were in the first year contracted to help support five daycares and I had, you know, instantly kind of started what would normally be a waitlist, but we were able to, you know, have the capacity to bring on those three more. Um, and with that, they've already helped, uh, create five new, uh, teaching assistant positions, which doesn't even typically happen till the second half of the year. But to answer your question, that's, um, it'd be eight new providers and three new teaching assistant positions at a minimum. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, for Melanie.
Sure.
So. I, I love, um, with your application, how you get seen with the employment outcomes. Um, and I know in the application, it said that the majority, eighty percent of participants reported increase in the number of childcare slots. So I was wondering, have, have those childcare slots been filled yet?
Uh, yes, that's, and that's where really, um, the team works kind of on both ends of, um, the childcare challenge is not, uh, just to help the providers create more, you know, capacity and sustainable business, but also help the, the families find the care, um, that they need. And they've helped, again, over two hundred families find care. I think they're, they've scheduled dozens of, of tours, you know, and it may, um, obviously may not be just in the, in the boost providers, but yes, those, we basically, uh, are able to kind of create a waiting list of sorts, um, to fill those slots so that once they receive the license for a larger, uh, care capacity, um, to go to a larger daycare center, uh, capacity, then we're able to fill in those slots and help offset the, you know, the cost of, of bringing on a teaching assistant. Um, and that's also where our teaching assistant subsidy that again is provided outside of CDPG funding, um, at Upwards expense, really helps those providers get over that initial, um, you know, potential blocker hesitation of, uh, bringing on the teaching assistant until we can fill in those slots, which happens, I mean, given the demand happens, uh, fairly quickly. Does that answer your question?
Uh, thank you. Any other questions? All right, uh, we have one applicant, return applicant for fair housing that's Project Sentinel. Uh, I'm going to assume that she has the turn up, internal account is Project Sentinel. Both them to balance if they would like to.
Hello there. Yes, this is Carol Khan, the Executive Director of Project Sentinel. Can you hear me okay? Sorry about my, uh, yeah, our account defaults to an internal account name there. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity to greet you all tonight, um, remind you a little bit about, uh, Project Sentinel, the services we provide, and specifically our goals and accomplishments in San Mateo, uh, city, city of San Mateo. Project Sentinel has been in operation since nineteen seventy-six. Um, we are, uh, we provide comprehensive housing counseling and advocacy, including fair housing investigation, enforcement, and litigation. Um, we've been actively serving and educating the residents of City of San Mateo in affirmatively furthering fair housing protection since two thousand and nineteen. Um, this year, Project Sentinel has already exceeded its goals for the year and the number of people served, number of cases opened through the second quarter. Um, generally speaking, we, um, serve approximately thirty to thirty-five persons. We open between ten and twelve, um, cases for investigation each year. Investigation can be anything from a series of weeks of touchback and document, um, retrieval and advocacy, all the way out to several months, all the way out to almost a year if we, if we do in fact file for an enforcement action. Um, we organize case litigation, draft enforcement letters. Um, we prepare for all-day mediation to try to settle matters. Um, and we have a very robust education program, uh, for housing providers and landlords in particular, uh, especially those who are more mom and pop landlords. Um, one interesting, uh, one, one kind of case, uh, that we recently handled that may lead to an enforcement action is that one of the rules under California for housing law is, um, you, 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 you cannot advertise that you will not rent to section eight voucher holders or voucher holders in general. And, um, we did uncover a case where somebody was denied housing because they were a voucher holder, essentially the person presented, volunteered the information, and then was ghosted upon any follow-up with her application. Uh, we took that case forward, um, and the property provider, um, has not responded to Project Sentinel either. And, um, anyway, that's one of the kinds of matters, for example, that could be what we call a prima facie or on its face, uh, violation of housing, uh, fair housing protection laws. So just to give you a little bit of a sense and a flavor for that, um, also, we are very active in the partnerships, um, in the city of San Mateo, as well as in the county, um, in general. And, um, you know, we facilitate a number of different venues and events, um, tabling events and so on, to distribute our education materials and, um, partner for outreach events to enhance awareness of fair housing rights. So we thank you, um, City of San Mateo for the, uh, partnership and, um, in moving forward, this, this very, uh, important set of protections for housing preservation, eviction protect, protection as well, as well as housing, removing the barriers to housing access. And in answer to, um, Commissioner Fitzgerald's question about the federal funding, I will chime in to say that HUD is the overwhelming, uh, the federal funding for fair housing is, um, overwhelming, uh, overwhelmingly our primary source of funding. And, um, we just learned that there may be an eighty-four percent reduction in workforce at HUD and we just don't know yet if that's going to also then trickle down and, uh, stall or otherwise, uh, halt our funding through HUD for fair housing work. So, um, to be continued, but we also obviously are watching the landscape, landscapes, excuse me, very closely on that, on that score. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Project Sentinel, Fair Housing Board? Thank you, Carol. All right, um, then let's move on to minor home repair. We have one applicant, two applications for minor home repair. And we have Melissa Lucas from Regaling Together Peninsula.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Lucas from Regaling Together Peninsula. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and I know that I'm coming to tail end of a lot of storytelling, so I'm going to try to keep it free. For those of you who are not familiar with us, uh, our mission is to repair homes and rebuild lives. And, uh, we've been doing that for over thirty-five years now, um, making it possible for our most vulnerable homeowners to, um, experience what it means to have a community come together and support them, um, in their, in their needs. Those that are traditionally marginalized, but they don't have to choose between buying groceries and, uh, living in a safe and healthy home. But more broadly, we like to think of ourselves as providing the opportunity for folks to, um, preserve affordable home ownership, uh, maintain the worst fabric of the community and bring hope and dignity as well. We've provided roughly thirty-five hundred projects over the course of the last thirty-five years with about nine thousand, uh, volunteers and for an in-kind donation of roughly forty-five million bucks. So we like to think of ourselves as a lifesaver as well. Um, for those who served, we served last year, a hundred percent were low, very low or, um, extremely low income. Average household income was forty-two thousand dollars last year. Eighty-one percent of our households had a senior living in the home and eighty-one percent, um, had, had a person with a disability as well. In terms of the feedback for our services, we find that, um, upwards of a hundred percent of folks reported last year they did in fact feel safer in their homes after we did the work. Uh, upwards of ninety-five percent felt reduced, reduction in their, uh, level of stress. And upwards of seventy-five percent felt more confident about their ability to remain in their homes as they age and age. Um, we've accomplished what we do with three basic programs. Um, our primary program is our year-round minor home repair program, which is conducted by, uh, two in-house, uh, repair technicians. The other program is our National Rebuilding Day, which I know most of you are familiar with. Uh, we have upwards of a thousand volunteers that help us to address the needs of homeowners on twice, twice a year. Um, and one of our captains most recently summarized his experience by saying that, volunteer experience with, uh, Rebuilding Together Peninsula, there's no way to have a impact in a single day like you can, uh, repairing homes with them. Um, the main objective of those programs is self-explanatory, but there's a third too that you may or may not be familiar with, which is that we provide lead paint abaintment, uh, as of last year, as well as, uh, mediation countywide, uh, especially for those homes, those older homes. Um, similar to what we've heard this evening, we've had our shared challenges with regards to, um, the HUD contracts. And, uh, I don't need to review those for those people who are impacted by the monitoring site visit, but I do want to just underscore the fact that, um, some of those challenges were countywide and, uh, and included the, the revision of the requirements that we had to learn in-house and make sure that staff were trained in. Um, it also, um, meant that, um, we learned that we had to do new kinds of testing that we've never done before, some of which, some of which take days to do. Uh, the average, uh, scope of work, uh, to, to design a scope of work to do those estimates generally took between three to four hours last, last round. Um, now they're taking upwards of eight hours at home. So there's some additional staff time that's needed, especially to adhere to the ten percent margin that we now have in terms of our reimbursement for, uh, for those estimates, which is kind of a level of expertise that we simply were not ramped up for. So, um, that's the bad news. Um, we also had, uh, our fair share of turnover in our staff. So for the better part of the year, just what you're seeing reflected there, uh, we did not have anyone doing any of our intake processing, um, trying to manage that with, uh, temporary help. And also we didn't have anyone doing outreach, that's another position. So, um, all that said, uh, our current, um, projections are, um, are, are reduced from the, the liberal slightly. And this coming year, we're expecting actually to add a couple to that estimate that you see there. So we should be close to being on track. A current home that we're working on is to, uh, install a new heating system for an elderly woman who's lived in the home for sixty-five years, which is fairly typical. Um, she's been through this cold spell, this last run without one. And we also did a bunch of insulation installation as well. Um, last thing I just want to say is that the outcome for this coming year is looking, um, very positive. We're fully staffed up. Um, staff are familiar with the amount of time it takes to, um, to submit these approvals. And with the, um, addition of the staff, we're actually seeing results in terms of increased applicants. Um, we have three in the pipeline currently, in San Mateo in particular. Um, and, and we have, uh, systems in place. And hopefully we'll have more than seven months to deliver on a twelve month contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions for, um, Regaling Together? One more there. No question? Okay. Well, then we can move on to last, and I'll leave public facilities applicant. Hip Housing, you have Kip and Har. Go into panelists, or you can see.
Hello, I think I have a presentation. Is that able to be pulled up?
Yes. Give us one second.
Getting pulled up, I just want to say thank you. It's been, um, it's been very eye-opening hearing how some of the agencies have been impacted by government funding. And, um, it's, it's a painful time, but I think that, that notion of resiliency is, is pretty spectacular and something that we've focused on a lot at, at Hip Housing, how to create resiliency and sustainability. And what I'm here to talk about tonight is, is part of that actually. So one of the things that we discovered that we really needed to do was to look at how we could reduce our operating costs. And we, over the last ten years, um, have been.
have been looking for exactly the right property to get out from under rent. So 111 East Fifth Street is what I'm here to talk about today. So that's here in San Mateo. Next slide. So Hip Housing specializes in creative affordable housing solutions. And we connect people to housing throughout San Mateo County. We've been doing that since 1972, so we've been around for 53 years. Next slide. And while that's what we do, what our mission is, is to invest in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people in our community. And we, we do that spectacularly each year. And we are also, as a side note, included in the city's housing element as a way to provide fair housing choice. Next slide. We help to house about 1,200 low-income people every year through a variety of programs. One is our Home Change Program, which matches people who have space with people who need an affordable place to live. We serve about 300 people in that program each year. Our Self-Sufficiency Program works with families who are either homeless or at risk of homelessness, but have a career goal. We help them get through school by providing them with their housing component and a lot of other supports. About 140 children and adults have served in that program. And then we have our property development side and our property management side. And in that, we preserve affordable housing throughout San Mateo County and are able to house people in actual physical units. We house about 740 people in, in that program. And, and that's about 503 units that we, that we own and operate. We launched a new program last year called Housing Readiness, specifically for this growing surge of seniors, extraordinarily vulnerable seniors that we're seeing coming through our program. They are often homeless for the very first time and very traumatized, not understanding where to go or where to turn. We worked with about 1,500 people last year through this program. We were able to actually house 15 of those using a variety of different tools. But the other 1,500, we continue to work with constantly, getting them on every waitlist, helping them with their budget, helping to provide them with services, and creating a safe environment so that they're not nearly as frightened and as traumatized and have more hope. Next slide. In the city of San Mateo, we have always been in the city of San Mateo. We've always rented in, in the city. 953 of those folks that we serve are actually San Mateo residents. We house 402 people in properties that we either own or do third-party property management for. That's over half of our portfolio of people housed in properties. Through our social service programs, another 79 are housed of San Mateo residents. And then we assisted 472 through our new Housing Readiness Program for housing services, resources, and referrals. Next slide. So what's the request today? We're looking for a capital investment into our new building, which is located at 115 East Fifth Avenue. It's for an elevator, which connects the first floor to, to the second floor. And you can see, in the very first photo there, where you can see the sign on the door that says inoperable, you can see a little bit of the door. So that door faces Fifth Avenue and right across the street from Central Park. So this is an extraordinarily centrally-located piece of property that we were able to acquire. I'd like to give a spin on that. So next, next slide. So we, like I said, we were founded in 1972, so we've been serving for a long time. We had a 10-year plan to purchase this building. So we, through our property development side, were able to get some developer fee. And we set that aside, knowing that funding is precarious. Government funding is especially precarious. And affordable housing has always been the purview of, of government assistance. And so knowing that this could be risky, we wanted to get out from under the thousands and thousands of dollars in rent that we needed to pay each year. And that was part of a program for sustainability. So was the reduction of the reliance on government funding. We went from being 60% government-funded to under 6% government-funded, using our property model as a, as a way to help us to, to sustain ourselves. Now, this is the next step in that sustainability model. So like I said, we set aside fees, developer fees, to help us. We added tons of board capacity on, with real estate attorneys, commercial development, and architect on the board. And, and we also even have a construction estimator on our, on our board now, too. And then we waited. We waited to really understand what we needed in a building, and we waited for the right time to purchase. Next slide.
Are we at the last slide?
There shouldn't be. There should be quite a few more slides, actually.
We hit our five-minute, we hit our five-minute presentation mark, so.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I can leave it there, but I'm happy to take quite a few questions, or if you have any questions. I know there's probably a question around, you know, what happened in the last funding cycle. But I'm also, if, if it's possible just to show the building, the next slide is one more, just so you can see it. So that, that's the building, so you can see it. Two-story, 750 square feet. So I'll, I'll stop there, knowing that it's late, but I'm, I'm happy to take questions. I hope you have a few.
Questions from the commission? Anything else you'd like to know about the scope of the project? Remember, that's probably application straightforward. Okay. All right. Nothing I wanted. Okay. In that case, we can move on to funding deliberation. We're gonna go back to maybe the slide. Over text, I just have to share for screen multiple times here. Yeah, that one, exactly. Just keeping in mind, once again, we did provide the commissioners with the evaluation criteria and scoring. We can take down your scores for each one, for each application. But the scores are not binding. We've discussed what categories we're operating in. A reminder, public services is limited to 15% of entitlement, which is why we're coming up with that 113,000, recommending that we fund every organization at the level that they were funded last year. Also caveat that because there is, there are fewer in the mix, this, this amount could increase somewhat. So we can see as high as 16,000 per organization. But again, we would be funding equally, if that's the recommendation of the commissioners. Then we can look at economic development and micro enterprise, fair housing, micro rehab, and then the public facilities application. So if you would, can we just quickly go down the line here for scoring for our public services organizations? Is everyone prepared to do that?
No. No, I mean, I get every way. Scores wasn't in the form that we thought about.
Okay. We can return to the evaluation criteria and just go over that. It's very broad, so it's really just, it's 30 points per category. And you can give those verbally now. I believe that's how it's been 10 years past anyway. She said verbally?
No, no, listen. No, we did it on, like, no one ever heard the scores.
We actually submitted electronically to the.
On these, like, it said next to it, like, in, online. And you just tallied your scores. You went along. It was online. We didn't bring it up.
Oh, you did not? You said at the meeting. Okay.
No.
Well, it is public record at any rate. But if commissioners are not prepared to give the scoring, that is fine. You can send it afterwards.
Can I ask some questions about the allocations?
Yes.
On this, the budget allocation?
Yes.
Why is there no cap on economic development, no allocation of services?
There's no cap on anything except for public services and admin.
Okay. Okay, and then under the administration, the 20% cap, what is the 60,000 for admin?
That is for the state, for us to run the program. So yes, just to be clear, the, we're very limited in what we can do in public services. In the other areas, there is flexibility to increase or decrease. But of course, we're dealing with the balance of whatever is there after we funded public services and admin. And the recommendation is to recommend, even we did the year before, because we're in this year two of the two-year cycle.
And that is why on your budget assumptions for upwards, you're giving them 40,000 on this assumption when they requested 64,000?
Because the recommendation is to maintain the funding from the prior year. I did say that I would return to the contingency language. So we can go over that just very briefly. This, their staff recommended contingency language, which is in the report. I'll put it into the presentation. So this is just to say that if the allocation is greater or less than, than our estimate, we would, we would allocate differently. However, we did recommend keeping certain, that's okay, certain funding areas the same, constant. So as soon as we can navigate to that slide, we can go over that language. And the CRC can also weigh in on that. So you can make a recommendation, if there is more or if there is less funding, how you would like to allocate that funding. So the recommendation, I wish there were a way that we could make that bigger.
Can we get rid of the participant? Just use the full screen.
View? Top, top right? Me? I have to do it in Zoom? Sorry, I just had a toilet and I'm over there. Might have to be on this thing? Better? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the, if the funding allocation is less than estimated, we're saying that we would, we would reduce the amount awarded for the public service applications equally so that we can remain under the 15% cap. However, award, if awards end up being below 10,000 each, so if it's reduced so much that every organization will receive less than 10,000, we would award fewer public service programs. CRC does not have to state this evening which programs those are. If it were that dramatic of a, of a reduction, we may have to. We do this. We are recommending retaining the amounts for minor home repair, economic development, and fair housing. We would also reduce the amount allocated to city-led public facilities, street and sidewalk improvements. And we would, of course, reduce our administration also to remain under that 20% cap. If the CDBG allocation is more than estimated, we would in turn increase the public service amounts as much as we can, under that 15% cap, equally across the organization, maintain the awards, minor home repair, economic development, and fair housing, and increase administration while staying under the cap 20%. And then any remaining additional funds could be used for public facilities. Those are staff-recommended responses to increases or decreases from, from the baseline assumption.
Can I just ask your thoughts on the first bullet point? Is the amount awarded for applications below 10,000 award fewer public service programs? How staff landed on that recommendation?
Um, yeah, it's not, it's not a hard and fast amount. It's just that under, under 10,000, it doesn't.
Do you think it's like not meaningfully helpful?
Yeah. That was, that was that.
Understanding that that's just a recommendation. And would it be possible, though, to ask the organization, or have we asked organizations their input on that? Whether they would think that even an amount below 2,000 would be meaningful?
We can certainly ask that if the organization is thinking.
Because then I do, I mean, in an ideal world, that just doesn't happen. We don't have to talk about this. This is like a done deal, and we don't have to revisit it. But in that instance, I guess, maybe even not now, would there be a way to collect feedback just to see whether less than 1,000 even would be beneficial? Because I think to me, that's a really hard decision that some organizations not paying at all. Like, I don't know whether 9,000 would be still meaningful and be worth it for every organization to receive that, or whether it's worth it still to give a higher amount. I'm sure each organization might even feel differently based on how they intend to use those funds. So if anything, I guess my, my recommendation would be just to have a step before that and just say, maybe we'll collect feedback from organizations that are requesting those, that those amounts from the public service programs.
Okay. You have a thought on the contingency language?
I agree with the gentleman, obviously. Just saying we would reduce it. I, I would recommend a step on that.
Okay. With that, then, if we could return to the public services applications, you can send the scores after the meeting. The, this recommendation that we are seeking is whether the CRC support equally funding on the organization. Noting also, we heard from Carl Primrose that they are actually asking for the 14,100. So thank you for asking that question, because that is not how it appeared in the application. So we'll make that correction. So everyone is at the level that they were at last year, requesting the same amount. Does the CRC have any thoughts about doing it differently in the coming year? Or shall we maintain the equal distribution?
I would support an equal distribution, because it's hard between the sources to distinguish what priority over what. And it seems that they're all so incredibly important right now. So also, thank you, Representative Klein, for being here for this. But I also would say, we're working with the same money, and we have one left applicant. Can we reapply that money amongst these applicants equally to come up with about 16,100?
Yes, yes, correct. So the, the recommendation that we will bring to the city council is that the CRC, CRC recommends that we fund them all equally. And then whatever the amount is that we can, the maximum 15% we will then divide up. In the other areas, well, we can turn to fair housing, maintaining the level of funding that is currently provided to Project Sentinel. Does the commission wish to recommend otherwise or to adopt that recommendation? That's what's down.
I support recommend. I agree with staff's recommendation.
On the micro enter, or in the economic development or micro enterprise category, does the commission support maintaining the funding amounts from the 25, 26 year for both Renaissance and upwards? Or does the commission wish to qualify differently?
I just have a question for staff on that. For the keeping the same amounts as last year without purely because the exact same amount was last year, not considering kind of the difference in the request this year?
Yes.
Okay, so no other factors other than the fact they're the same as last year?
And then a thought on economic development and micro enterprise? Would you guys have the contingency language?
I support recommending Renaissance of the same amount. I think the explanation was plenty for why they hadn't met their Q2 goals yet, but it seems like there was a valid reason for that. I just do want to recognize that upwards, they request a larger budget. And I think the conservative recommendation makes sense, if only because it's only our second year of funding them, and they're a newer group that we're funding. But their, like, their meeting, their goal is pretty astronomical, at least from what's reported here. So just to keep that in mind for future years, even if we're being conservative only this next year, because it's only the second year that we're funding them.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and then for minor home, minor home, we have Rebuilding Together. We recommend funding at the same levels as the prior year. If the commission was to recommend we fund Rebuilding Together. Um, if the commission was to recommend, we'd fund the building together.
I support staff's recommendation.
Okay. Finally, on public facilities. If you want applicants to public facilities, and a reminder that there is the um Cora award or core recommendation, adapted recommend in the report, just more or less rounding it up to fifty thousand, as you may recall, they um requested two um improvements, and uh because of limited funding, the commission recommended um focusing on the Breezeway project. Um, and so I blew that in mind to just under fifty thousand. Um, given the amount of funding that is available, it is possible to fund Cora at even fifty thousand dollars, if the commission recommends that. Um. The commission could also just recommend, you know, if if funding is available to do that. Um. Any thoughts about Cora before we move on to?
I recommend funding in a higher level, considering that there is like the open, if you see that address. Okay, was it fifty-seven thousand? That was the original recommendation? Of their application, because I'm not seeing their application.
Yeah, their application is from July.
Right.
Um. And the recommendation was to fund let me see it in my own notes here, forty-nine, it was just under twenty-three thousand, yeah.
And are we looking at the public services, the public facilities award of two hundred thousand as the total award? So by giving fifty thousand to Cora Award, th- there's only a hundred and fifty thousand remaining?
And again, this is estimated, right?
Yeah, of course. Uh, I would recommend uh keeping for outward they asked for, which was forty-nine thousand seventy-seven.
Um, other commissioners?
So do they have one recommendation for doing the higher amount one, which I mean? Um, this is probably not helpful, like somewhere in the middle, where if it's, if the funds are available, I'd rather keep that one, which if the funds are available, or like add in that language.
Than available.
Then to do the higher amount. Uh, I have one question regarding the elevator project. And I know in our contingency language, we essentially said that if we come out at less than estimated, then we're gonna just overall um or do we, is our contingency language for the public service public facility?
Uh, yes, if if it's less, then we would, we would reduce it, yeah. We did not say the amount that we would reduce, we just say it basically is necessary.
I guess my question for that is, is there a minimum where that project is not going to happen? Cause that's a, that's all that money is going towards that construction project. These are like very different services. I'm just wondering, is there a number at which that project no longer becomes viable, that they receive less than hundred and two thousand?
Um, Hip, would you like to speak to that, Kate?
Sorry, everything disappeared on my computer. I couldn't find it. Um, yes, so the project we're estimating to be uh between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets as a as a result of labor and the cost of of the materials to to create the elevator. We have two different routes we can go. One is to repair the existing elevator, but that's a very, very much an unknown at this point, because we can't even get the doors open. So we're not sure exactly what's going on inside. Um, and the other is to replace it with something called a Lula, which is not as um invasive and intense as a full elevator. Because we have only a two-story building, um, the Lula is is an option for us. And so for us, the hundred and fifty thousand, we're already gonna be adding another probably fifty thousand of fundraised funds. If we can continue to raise funds, less than than the hundred and fifty would would be possible, and we would probably know that by September timeframe, if we were able to to raise additional funds beyond the fifty that we're already planning to commit. So I guess, you know, yes, there's a very good possibility that with less, we could still move forward, but we don't know what that is until till we finish our fundraising campaign.
And when is construction projected to start?
So for this project, it's likely that it wouldn't start until the November, December timeframe. Um, again, because we want to make sure that we have time to raise the adequate funds. Hundred and fifty would basically buy the materials, and then what we'll be doing is is all the additional, like the electrical, the labor to and and other sort of more soft costs.
Yeah, I'm I'm having the contingency language, and I'm finding I'm recommending staff's recommendation.
Okay. Other commissioners?
Thoughts on the language or thoughts on the word itself?
Um, either.
So can you send me your language?
Okay, sure.
Just wondering if it came out differently, though, on the um additional funds potentially going to Cora? How does how does that work? Does the city council just hear all of our recommendations, and they make a decision based off of that?
Yes, um, and staff also make the recommendation.
Did you have a separate recommendation for those extra funds? I'm not sure.
Um, staff's recommended for for the for Cora?
Yeah, for if it go, if there's um more money available, what to do with it?
Staff, staff recommended just going to the fifty thousand now, um, because we're assuming that we will have two hundred thousand available. If there's even more available, um, we would not award more to to Cora or to Hip at this point, um, since we have their budgets. Um, and so we wouldn't go about, yeah, if we had more, we could distribute it to other um areas, other funding areas, or more could go to the public facilities of where city does, so we wouldn't increase that.
Uh, but I'm actually comfortable um with my recommendation being going to fifty now, if that was your recommendation.
Okay. So I, I'm only sure, or Vice Chair Fitzgerald didn't have any comments today. Okay, um, so I will attempt to repeat then what the uh recommendations are, because we should have a motion unless there's any further discussion. I don't want to end too early, um, um, but um we would need to get a motion and then just a um a rundown of the recommendation. So uh going down with this for public services, supporting equal distribution of of funding across the organization. Um, keeping Project Sentinel um allocation current or consistent with the prior year. Um, keeping the current um allocations consistent with the prior year for the economic development for um Renaissance and for upwards. Um, uh, keeping the current amounts for minor home repair, for rebuilding together. Um, funding Cora at fifty thousand. Um, and Hip at a hundred and fifty thousand. Okay. We have a motion. And then just Cheryl. Right, Commissioner Fitzgerald, go ahead. Oh, you can speak.
Uh, I motion to, oh, the the language just went away, but I.
Oh. Oh, sorry. Ten minutes of drinking coffee.
I almost had it memorized. Thank you. I motion to recommend the following funding distribution for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Community Development Block Grant Community Funding Program as previously recited.
Thank you. Thank you. Seconded by Chair Bull. Right, can you do the call? Chair Bull. Vice Chair Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell. Commissioner, yeah. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, thank you to everyone who attended and who made a presentation and stuck with us. Appreciate it. Um, I have got to.
So again, um, thank you so much. I know it's been a long evening, and um the information was very simple for you. Um, we know the application process itself was very consuming, and then taking time to talk about it, a lot of participation and answer our questions, um, both in person and also on Zoom and on phone. We do really appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to thank um staff, Rachel, Jennifer, um, for providing the PowerPoint presentations and also compiling everything for us to make it so it was very user-friendly and easy to understand. Um, we know that takes a lot of time, and so we do appreciate that. So um at this point, um, we will go ahead and move on to the bulletin announcements. So are there any reports or announcements from commissioners or staff?
No reports, announcements, and stuff.
Okay, well, if there's nothing more for the commission, I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.